This is a session that has been organized by the IEEE. In a minute, I will tell you what the IEEE is. But it's quite important to note that in some respects, this particular session has been trailed right throughout this morning, and more importantly, in the sessions that were being held earlier on, where clearly the role of women in science and engineering is at center stage. And I'm particularly pleased to see there are a number of you people over here. What I'll do is essentially to share with you some of the thinking behind setting up this workshop. And then I have a very distinguished panel of colleagues from the IEEE who will come and tell you a little bit more about IEEE as a global organization and what it is doing for women and by women. And more importantly, as far as the structure of this particular program is concerned, you would find that where you're sitting, there is a questionnaire. So unlike normal panels, we are going to be looking to engage the audience in a different way. Rather than at the end just have a question and answer session, we are hoping that you participate with us and share your thoughts on a number of questions that are really open questions, both for the audience, for the IEEE, for engineers in the large. And let us see if you can come up with some credible answers to those questions, which we can then use to feed back into the planning for this particular workshop. So, as I said earlier on, the idea really is to share with you the thinking behind this topic of inspiring the future, because after all, everybody would agree that women are the future. They are the people who shape the future. And what role women engineers have and professional organizations have in ensuring this future is something we've got to touch upon. Now, I seem to have had a pointer over here which has walked away from me. So, the presenters are a distinguished group of people. They all represent different aspects of the IEEE. Rather than read through their names, I will introduce them in some detail when they come along. But the key point really is, at the end of the day, we want to engage you. So do bear in mind that there is an opportunity over here to express yourself in both an informal sense and a formal sense by responding to the questionnaire that are lying there with you. I thought, bearing in mind the discussion that had happened this afternoon, more so than in the morning, let me share with you why women in engineering here. This is a science event, the World Science Forum. And I thought, bring to your attention some well-known statements that were made, which in a ways show the complementarity and the distinguishing features between science and engineering. And who better to quote than Einstein, who says, "The scientists investigate that which is already is present. Engineers create what there has to be done that has never been. Scientists create questions while engineers provide solutions." Science in general, these with observing and coming up with hypotheses and theories, while engineers help to create solutions to answer those questions. So the two are truly complementary to each other. So this was my beginning comments. I'm now going to take you through a series of presentations which have to do with -- so if I might need your help to set the slides up on IEEE. IEEE is a world organization with some 430,000 members throughout the world in over 160 countries. I don't think it's this one. It's the next slide. No, 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 it's another presentation.
I'll open it. That's where it goes. So it's the next set of slides, right?
Yeah. I'm glad at least this intermission gives us an opportunity to set up a few more members of the audience. Thanks very much. Okay. So, as I said earlier on, it's just a very large international organization. It's the largest organization of professional engineers. And the key thing is, its mission statement is advancing technology for the benefit of humanity. And what you will see today from our presentations is how the IEEE tends to deliver on this. So the field for the IEEE is forward-thinking, technology professionals who are members of this organization, they come together to discover the next technological innovation. Remember the emphasis in the next technological innovation. To develop international standards. Standards are an important piece of technology which essentially forms the glue for any new products and services that come about. To form communities of like-minded people to share research and education in the spirit of collaboration. So, at a glance, 430,000 members in 160 countries with 46 different technical councils, each one of them representing a specific technology or discipline. Other activities include women in engineering, and you'll hear more about it from some of our distinguished colleagues here. There is a major program under global humanitarian efforts, and Soha at the end will tell you more about it. And clearly, another aspect of the IEEE's role has been to do with continuing education and certification. In addition to being a very large community of like-minded people, professionals, the IEEE sponsors over 1,800 conferences throughout the world. It's the largest sponsor of technology-related events throughout the world, 1,800 per year. We have over 4 million technical documents within the database called IEEE Xplore. 200 of the top cited articles are published by the IEEE, and there are 1,300 active standards. I'm going to skip this thing because this just tells you that we are worldwide with offices in Europe, Asia, North America, and so on. We have, as I said, over 430,000 members, and they're distributed again throughout the world. This slide will come up again in other discussions. What is the core strength of the IEEE? It's its technological know-how of its members. And here's a list of some of the subject areas where electronic and electrical engineering and computer science professionals contribute to the growth and evolution of their own subject area, ranging from aerospace right through to transportation management. Where do you find IEEE members? I think this -- I will labor on this particular slide for a minute, just to emphasize to you that the body of knowledge and representation these colleagues bring to you is world-class. So 98 of the top 100 engineering and technology universities have members of the IEEE. All top 100 engineering universities in the U.S. contain members and senior members and fellows of the IEEE. Nine of the top 10 communications engineering companies have IEEE members. Seven of the top 10 telecommunications corporations include members who are active professionals who belong to the IEEE. Nine of the top 10 computing companies employ IEEE graduates or whose leadership belongs to the IEEE. 28 of the top 29 semiconductor companies worldwide have engineers belonging to the IEEE and management personnel who play an important role in the driving force behind IEEE's activities. All of the top 10 aerospace companies have members and also contribute to professional development of the technologies within the IEEE, and so on. Future direction, these are some of the recent initiatives that the IEEE is conducting. An activity on digital sensors, sensors, looking at computing from a totally different perspective called rebooting computing, software-defined radio, big data initiatives, cybersecurity, 5G telecommunications systems, so on and so forth. I could go on and on by chance. I'm going to just come to a very quick conclusion, and that is to say thank you all very much. And just let me reiterate, this is a workshop. It is not just a series of standard canned presentations by professionals. Our hope really is to engage the audience through the questionnaire, through Q&amp;A sections, to try to answer some of the critical issues that are coming up, and what role women engineers have played, are playing, and should play, and will play in the future. So thank you very much. I'm going to now invite our keynote speaker, our next person, and let me just pick up a few details. It's Bhujana Pasak. She is the Global Chair of the IEEE Women in Engineering Organization within the IEEE. She received her M.S. degrees in mathematics from the University of Warsaw, and PhD and DSc from the University of Warsaw School of Economics. Now she works at the Kansas University, where she's a professor of mathematics, a courtesy professor of the Departments of Electrical Engineering and Computer Science and Aerospace Engineering. She's an investigator at the Information and Telecommunications Technology Center, an affiliate faculty at the Center for Computational Biology, and a Chancellor's Club teaching professor. At Kansas University, she was named the Kansas University Woman of Distinction and inducted into the Kansas University Women's Hall of Fame. She's a strong advocate for women in STEM. She's the founder of the IEEE CSS Women in Control, first chair of IEEE CSS Standing Committee on Women in Control, founder of the faculty advisor of Kansas University Students' Chapter of Association of Women in Mathematics, and SIAM, founder and coordinator of the Kansas University Outreach Program, and founder and chairman of the Stochastic Adaptive Control Seminar at Kansas University. She's an associate of several journals. She's a fellow of the IEEE and a fellow IFAC, and she received these recognitions for important contributions to stochastic control, inspiring vision of control as a field that spans science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, for the commitment of control and for her commitment to control education. She's a recipient of the IEEE Third Millennium Medal, the IEEE Computer Science Distinguished Members Award, and many more. I'm now going to invite Bhujana to give us her presentation from the perspective of global chair of women in engineering. So, if you want to set up a slide.
Sure. Maybe you can. Thank you very much, Dr. Duran, for that long introduction. And I am so glad that I made the trip, over 30 hours' trip, but I always wanted to come to Jordan. And I came only for two days, but I'm already working for changing my flight and stay two more days. So, thanks a lot, and thank you to women for coming here. And let me share with you, as professor, how I keep women in classes, in classrooms. I always say, losing a woman from the advanced course of calculus or whatever is my personal failure. So please, women, don't leave the room, because I will consider it as my personal failure. It's just privilege to be -- you've heard from introduction, I am a big fan of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And I'm a living example of just combining all of them and just tremendously enjoying, enjoying doing that kind of connections. And if you want to learn anything today from me, remember my favorite tool, C to the power five. Five Cs: curiosity, creativity, connections, communications, and collaborations. With those five Cs, I can make change everywhere. And even today, I would come back to Jordan and make a change. I saw in the morning a wordies on the stage, and I already, when I saw man by man by man, I already started worrying about the lack of women. Fortunately, that's why you probably heard me screaming, bravo, because I saw one woman. But this is what we collectively can make a change. And it's so easy to make changes of that type, but it requires collaboration. It requires working together. And I join IEEE, I am by that accent is not Kansas accent. I am fully educated and raised in Poland, in Warszawa. So I follow, I fell in love, and I follow a man who is American, and I have a daughter who is combining mathematics, engineering, and now on the track to professor of neurology. So, because her interest was brain. So in other words, that engineering and engineering, those disciplines can take you everywhere, wherever you want to. It's up to you. And that's why IEEE was close to my heart. I have to say that how I -- where we have clicker. Oh, okay. So, how I jump to -- wait a minute, I should do that. Maybe I can do here. We can change. Oh, you do it. Oh, okay. Okay, can you see, I need my angels, always. And I have to say that when I moved to the United States, I attended first conference in my profession, which is control and stochastic control. I attended in Los Angeles '87, and program chair of the conference approached me, and he says, "Did you notice that out of 700 papers delivered at this conference, only two women were presenters? Two women among 700." So he says, "Make a change." And whenever you will say, "Make a change," I am just ready. So I made change. I am founder of Women in Control, and beautifully, beautifully, absolutely advanced group. But look here, only few months in my position of global chair, I am so proud, because you can make change if you engage all people in network. This is the fastest growing among all technical societies, technical councils, all regions, all sections, the fastest growing is just my new baby, Women in Engineering. So it's over 20,000 now. Yeah, yeah. You need to join me, because my campaign is, if every member will bring only one member, so please become member of IEEE Women in Engineering, because my goal is to double that number by next year. So look at growing affinity groups. You've seen in the whole entire IEEE, you've seen over 400 affinity. Here is almost 800 affinity groups. And I am lucky, my department supports my trips. Every week, I am somewhere, somewhere, even my husband does not follow where I am. So our group is of course inspired, but I wanted to focus on the most important things that I make change. We have as organization 13 subcommittees. You can choose whatever if you want to join us, whatever fits you, whatever you can offer, because I love that kind of things. Instead of waiting, what society, what organization will offer me, what I can offer to make a change. Come, join me and make a change. And I wanted to focus on my new committee, visibility. This is what I referred in the morning, visibility. Identify your colleagues around, female colleagues. Identify, nominate, absolutely bring attention. Awareness is the key for success, awareness. So awards, recognition. I brought that slide only to show you how dynamic, how effective, how the organization is. It's just beautifully engaged in activities, outreach, everything what one can think, awards, funding, special funding. Of course, you can apply for our special funding if you have special event, up to $400 you can get for special event. So, and awards, as many as possible. This is what I'm working on, increasing awards, increasing recognition. But awards are not the only way of recognizing. Also, IEEE Fellows, for women is .02, almost negligible still percentage. And in Women in Control, I increased, when I was Vice President of the Society, I increased by 300% IEEE Fellows. So you can do it, if I can do, we can do together. And this is what is excitement. This is why I joined that IEEE, looked at the first-time mathematician in this position. But because of my background, because of my brother, you know, education, I can really bring a lot of help, I call help of experience. And those awards are ready and wait, but I wanted also to focus on that kind of special activity. Leadership summits. So locally, Jordan can propose for next year, the call will be just in few days, the call will be for 2018. I attended in Poland, a summit in Krakow, and I attended recently in Malaysia, and they were terrific, just fantastic. I could speak for four hours about that, but you can read newsletter, a recent copy of newsletter, and you can read about my impression about those summits. And they are all around, and they are absolutely bringing and building network and learning from each other. This is what it's about. And we will have, we have a lot of telecommunications, so we have a lot of teleconferences, and we are extremely active. But here is that I say leadership summits. Here you have picture from Poland in September, terrific, terrific organization. And then we have, you are all invited to San Jose in California. This is that biggest international leadership conference that brings over 1,300 women. I attended last May, and it's amazing. It's amazing how much you can learn. So plan to attend in San Jose, and they have over 100 speakers. They have workshops. They have everything what one can think about during two days, you can learn tremendously a lot. And we plan for next year, something totally new, technical workshops. So we initiated this year that at every major technical conference, by technical society, we want to have get-together women, panel, forum, discussion, just bring visibility. And I'm going in December to my professional organization control conference in Melbourne, Australia, and we have over there, on the average 80 women attend lunch, and we share with each other on the first day of the conference, we build friendship, important friendship to promote each other. So, and our magazine is just winner among all winners. It's unbelievable number of awards. Even this year, three awards, and even National American Award for Design. So you can look at those magazines, and we are unbelievably proud of that kind of sharing with others. And I believe that that was the last. I will be of course happy to answer questions, but I naturally join what I believe. My daughter was the only American in her program, my daughter at engineering school. And my daughter, Sartor, I was like, she says now, "Without you saying that I can do it, I would probably drop that," because I found that program was not friendly for women, because I didn't see any woman. But can you see, you can make a change, even by being one, but you can bring another one. You can bring, you know, like in control community, I was starting with lunches. My husband is generous. He paid for those lunches for a long time. Now society gives thousands for those lunches to get together. So I'm saying, my message to you is, is be active, organize, mobilize your colleagues and friends on challenges, and just solve problems. Be aware what is needed and how you can help. But first of all, promise that you will join me, and then I will come back to Jordan, and you will find me in other countries. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Bhujana. This was very, very important for us, because she gave you a very high-level view of what the IEEE from a global perspective is doing. We felt that for a workshop of this kind, we should have presentations by very senior colleagues, but at the same time, we should bring to your attention that critical tensions, opportunities, that younger people are facing at the present moment. So as part of this panel, we have two millennials. One of them is now going to make a presentation from a perspective of what she's doing for what's called IEEE Region Eight, which is Europe, Middle East, and Africa. And the other one is your own homegrown talent from Jordan. But first of all, I'll invite Yumna to come and talk. While she's getting ready, let me give you a very quick update on her background. She holds a BE in Telecommunications and Engineering from the American University of Beirut. And after gaining more than three years of experience in the field, she's currently due to start her master's degree in management at the Technical University of Munich in Germany. Besides being an engineer, Yumna is committed volunteer, especially within the IEEE. She's the Region Eight, which is Europe, Middle East, and Africa area Women in Engineering Coordinator, and is a member of the Global Women in Engineering Committee. She's also a member of the, member MGA, is a special part of the IEEE Students' Activities Committee, and she chairs the Students' Professional Awareness Activities Program. Yumna.
Thank you, Tharid. I will be brief, and I will first start talking about the Region Eight Women Engineering Programs, which are carried in 57 countries in Region Eight of IEEE. As Tharid said, Region Eight encompasses Europe, the Middle East, and Africa. So we are 3,500 members plus, and we are 133 affinity groups. The affinity groups are officially formed in 38 countries in Region Eight, and we are in 96 student branches as well. So in your student branch, if you would like to establish a support group for women in engineering and in STEM in general, please do join Women Engineering, and we will contact us, and we will be able to form, and you will be able to form a group within your student or your university. And Johanna here is the chair of her Women Engineering Group at university. Our committee consists of myself, of Takuwa from Cyprus, Joyce from South Africa, Randa from Tunisia, Maria Alexandra from Switzerland, Lebohang from South Africa, and Anna from For our programs, their main goal is to promote women in STEM and to create a support network as well. So we have the Coffee Talks Program, which is mainly about a get-together, an informal get-together between women and men, and a successful woman in STEM. So she would share her experiences, her challenges and successes with them, and she will, in an informal way. We have also the mentorship program, and it has started with an initiative from Tunisia and Palestine. It now has Lebanon and Turkey, and also, they're all It now has Lebanon and Turkey, and also they're all now on board in an attempt to exchange their experiences and to learn from each other. So now the Mentorship Program has started in our region, and it aims at bringing all together several people from different countries. The STAR Program is a global Women Engineering Program. It's not Region Eight one, so it's mainly under Bojana. And it is carried by Women Engineering Members at schools. So Women Engineering Members are encouraged to go to schools and invite young girls to participate in special programs aiming at letting them learn about engineering and STEM in general. So if they find that it is, the subject is interesting, they would know and they will be able to join it later. And now as a plan in Region Eight, and since IEEE is mainly a technical community, we are planning to encourage more and more women to participate in technical conferences. I will give an example about the Student Paper Contest. So the Student Paper Contest is the longest running Region Eight contest for over fifty years. And this year, it was won for the first time by a female writer. So the lead writer was a female for the first time after more than fifty years. So this was a breakthrough, but at the same time, it signals a problem that women are not participating in enough technical conferences and enough technical competitions. So we hope we will be able to change that with your help. And we are going to be present as much as we can in conferences and summits or congresses. So I would like to encourage women to participate, to submit papers and to compete. We will try recognizing women who participated and submitted papers. We will try also to organize special tracks and hold networking events and meetups at flagship conferences. As a recognition for women in engineering or STEM, we have, we have established the Clementina Sadua Award. The Clementina Sadua Award is a very prestigious award that recognizes outstanding women who have achieved a lot in their career, but also who support other fellow women as well. The Clementina Sadua Award is named after the Region Eight Coordinator, the first Region Eight Coordinator Clementina Sadua, who was killed in an act of violence. So to honor her, we have named the award after her. And every year on February fifteen, anyone can nominate. So the nominators can be known IEEE members. If you know any woman who is supportive of fellow women and who has established several achievements in STEM, please do not hesitate to nominate her. And if you have any question about the award, please contact us. Now regarding my, my brief experience at work after three and a half years, and what you would like to discuss later during the workshop and sessions, interactive sessions. So some countries have the gender equality problem at the roots. So not many, not many females are joining universities or even entering in the STEM fields. This is not the case in Lebanon. In Lebanon, we are fifty-fifty, at least in the engineering fields. So fifty percent are female and fifty percent are male. But the problem is always there at work. So as the hierarchy goes up, the number of women tend to decrease. And also there is the pay gap, which is a problem even in the most gender equal communities. I would like to think, if we can think, about three main points. So regarding the promotions, I have, I had, I have had conversation with Katie Herring Hayashi, a senior technical lead at Qualcomm. She's a member of the Promotion Board, and she's the only woman in the board. So she informed me that when men, when they are considering promotions and men are there, they would say, he did X, Y, Z. So another one comes in, and he did this and this and that. However, when a woman comes in, usually the board tend to think in terms of how she reacted under certain circumstances. When this happened, she did that, and she said that when this person was present. So she notices this, and within her role, she tries to point out the achievement of the female candidate for the promotion. She would say, okay, great, but let's look, let's have a look also at her achievements. So this, I don't believe that this problem is only faced by Kathy. I believe it is very widespread in our communities. The second point is that why, where are the roots of the gender gap? Where are the roots of actually that women should do this and men should do this? Who said that this job is mainly for men? And who said that this job is technically for women? And I would like us all to think about that as well. Because when we know the root, we can change and we can develop when we know the root of the problem. And finally, I believe that when a woman wants to spend her time at work, she should be allowed to do so. If she wishes to have a career and spend much of her time at work, she should, she should be allowed to do so. In our societies, men have the time to be managers and to have big responsibilities. But women are supposed to be back at home to take care of families and children by a certain time. So let's think about this, and maybe we could allow the woman to decide for herself how she would like to perform her own balance in her own life. And finally, please email us at rhp@IEEE.org and visit us. Also, you can like us on Facebook and join us to be in touch. Thank you. Please ask questions.
Thank, thank you very much.
They want to take a picture of the email address.
Oh, right, okay, okay, put it up, last one. So these are email addresses. If you like, we could make sure that all of the slides that are being presented are readily available to anybody in the audience. So either you can come along and sign a sheet for us, or we'll talk to the organizers and see how these could be readily made available. But I'd like to move on now, where I said we have two millennials over here to give us a slightly different set of perspectives. The second of these is Sonia Azuhul, and she's a candidate in MSC Energy Economics and Policy at University of Surrey. She was selected as a Chieftain Scholar, which is a higher claimant, highly contested privilege scholarship that's offered by the UK government in 2017. She has been the chairperson for the IEEE Women in Engineering Affinity Group at IEEE Jordan Section. She's a Fellow of the Arab Program for Sustainable Energy Youth, APSY. She's a member of the U.S. Ambassador Youth Council in Jordan. She's an environmental activist and a member of many international youth organizations such as India. She has been a part of the study of the U.S. Institutes for Student Leaders on Women Leadership, where she was awarded the Silver Award for Excellence in Social Action Plan. Sonia is a public speaker who has delivered speeches on climate change, sustainability, women's empowerment, and social responsibility. Today, she's going to share with us her experience in terms of gender diversity in industry, challenges and solutions.
Thank you, Professor Tadej, for this very nice introduction. So today I want to talk about gender diversity in the industry. We all know that women are underrepresented in the, in the top corporations in all industries and across all countries. And the gender diversity argument is no longer an ethical one, it's more of an economic one. So the question is, why don't we see more women at the top levels? What, what is stopping women from reaching there? We all recognize the benefits of having diverse, gender diverse workplace. It, it boosts, I'm just gonna, okay. It boosts innovations and financial returns. There was a study that was done by Harvard Business Review that found that it's more likely that if there is an organization that has a diverse culture, it's seventy percent more likely to capture a new market. New market means more money, more money means a better economy. So knowing all these facts, that the benefits of having a gender diverse culture, I mean, we still don't see like many women in the industry. So there was another study that says in 2015, across all the tech firms, only thirty percent of women were looking at technical or leadership roles. So what can be done? Seeing all these facts, we can ask these questions. Is it the culture or does like the math is hard? I don't think the math is hard. If it's hard, it's hard on everyone. It's not about males or females. So the main, the two main issues that Yumna mentioned before that faces women, it's face, it's, it's pay, pay gap and position gap, plus the culture. So position gap and pay gap are very correlated, correlated. If you have a position gap, you definitely have a pay gap. But I would, a little bit disagree with Yumna that, because some, some experts argue that the issue is not having women and men being paid differently by holding the same position. It's that, that we have more men present at the top level of, of management. So that is the issue. And I always, I have, I always love to quote this, it's a very old Chinese proverb. It says, women hold up half the sky. But seeing all these numbers, I mean, women are not holding up half of the CEO positions. So looking at some numbers, and as Yumna mentioned, that men, men managers are forty percent more likely to get promoted than women. And that what generates the position gap and the payment, the pay gap. Looking at this employment hierarchy, so if we look at the, the, the law was level, this is where people like young females and young males are started looking for, getting into the market, started looking for employment. And we see actually more women seeking employment in STEM fields. And this is due to some culture, like we, we know that many young men tend to seek employment in different countries, within the region or internationally. But females tend to stay within the country, and it's a cultural thing. So at this level, we don't have much of a pay gap because they just an entry level. But going higher with employment hierarchy, there are less females. So less females, and this is where the gender pay gap grows. Regarding the gender parity, all the regions, all the countries, they has, they still have a long way to go to reach gender parity in general, especially regions like Middle East and North Africa. So what can be done? I believe that to, to, to get to an equal gender diverse industry at least, we need to all put effort. It's like governments, organizations, individuals. When it comes to governments, what governments can do, we, we all know that we have the Sustainable Development Goals. We have goal number five, to achieve equality, to empower all women and girls. I mean, if all the resources that were allocated for this goal that used efficiently, we will definitely get to a gender diverse industry or throughout all the industries. There's also, we need to have legislations and policies like wage transparency. There's this new legislation that just went, like just, they started it this year in the UK that says organizations with over two fifty employees, they need to stop publishing their, or reporting they, their pay for women and men publicly. And this is where, this is generates some sort of awareness. Organization will start paying attention to their pay gap. So everybody would know, like this organization is paying fairly and this is not. And now I'm just gonna, it's personally speaking, I do believe that one of the most important things is to work with mentorship programs, coaching, and promoting for leadership, for role models. For me, this is what worked. I, I know that one, one of my role models is sitting here in, within this room, Ariba. When I started my career, yeah, I, I actually, I was a bit lost because I was always the only female in the team. It was really hard because you feel like, am I in the wrong place? So I had to seek advice, I had to look, look up for someone. So I actually, actually quoted, and I was like, can you be my mentor for, can we meet? And you like lead me or guide me, I need to know what to do. So without this, I wouldn't have been able to survive in the energy sector. And I wouldn't have been here on the stage talking about gender diversity. It is really important because we need to be role models for the other generation to have more young female industrialists in, in this sector. So we need to have more platforms. And WIE is one of these platforms that promote for women, that this is where you can seek mentorship. Because unfortunately, the mentor and mentee concept is not very famous still in the region. We still need more of that. We need to have platforms, and I do believe that WIE is one of these platforms that are delivering this successfully. So thank you for all the role models out there, and I hope we will have more role models here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia, for giving a slightly different perspective from an industry viewpoint. Our next speaker is Miriam Althani, and she would speak from a vast experience, both from the industry sector and academic sector and from the second point of view of working for the IEEE. So let me give you a very quick background, Miriam. She holds a BS in Electrical Engineering from the UAE University and an EMBA from the Zayed University, which she earned in 2007. Miriam is currently a Senior Specialist Distribution Asset Manager in DEWA. Miriam also served, has also served reputed organizations and executive positions, including the UAE University, Dubai, Schneider Electric, DIFC, and Ducap. She has successfully the Ducap HV factory building project and test unit facility, which is a joint venture between DEWA and ADWA and Ducap. It was inaugurated by the ruler of Dubai, His Excellency Sheikh Mohammed bin Rashid al-Muklum in November twenty eleven. I think the important point really is that she has really worked very hard in an industrial sector, which is primarily dominated by men. But she shared with us her experience of what she's been doing. She's been very active in IEEE Women in Engineering, particularly in the UAE. She has that section. It's a long list over here, I shan't go in terms of the time limit available to us, but I'm going to invite Miriam to go ahead and talk about her presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Tara. Just to start, yes. Just to start, my name is Miriam Althani. I do believe that the first priority for a woman is children and family. Is it, or no? I don't think this, okay. This one, oh, okay. Now, yes? Okay. My, my belief is the first priority for women is raising children and have family. But how many single women in the Arab world, or in the world? So many. The first priority is children, family. They are the core business for women. This is the future. This is my belief. And coincident, I was in, sixth of November, two days ago, in Bahrain, and I had the pleasure to meet the ruler wife of Bahrain. And although she was supporting the Engineering Forum for Women and support women education in, in STEM, at the same time, she said the same thing. First priority, the new generation is the more important for every community to be raised well for the future. So this is my belief. Though I am working in industry more than eighteen years, in aluminum, in cable, and working as a volunteer, I will show you some example of my life, my career. But this is my belief. Second point, also just to start with, is the challenge at work. Facing men and women are the same, only different picture. So I believe that men also facing challenges at work and similar to women, but we, we only raise our voice, but men also facing different challenges. And this is through my experience working with men. So to start with, our President of United Arab Emirates, Sheikh Khalifa bin Zayed al-Hayyan, he said, "The Federation of the United Arab Emirates has relied and will continue to rely, rely on the rich and diverse contribution of its true wealth." He said, "It's a true wealth, its people, to guarantee its prosperity." So our government consider... So our government consider people is more important. The ruler of Dubai, Sheikh Mohammed bin Rashid al-Makhlum, he said, "The Vice President and the Prime Minister of the UAE, behind every great community stand the great women, leading each generation and raising our families and nation higher." So you can understand, I came from United Arab Emirates that believe in its people and women. Here, the just brief agenda, I will be, I will talk about UAE, my education, life, volunteer with the different, and my experience with federal council election. And I left the references, so all my, the information came from references, if any statistics available in my presentation. United Arab Emirates is a seven Emirates get together, formed a United Arab Emirates in 2nd of December 1971. So I was born in Rasul Khema, northern Emirates. My father originally from Dubai. My mom's family originally from Abu Dhabi. And I'm currently working in Dubai. It's a whole country. So only borders was there before the United Arab Emirates, but we are the same country. So it was from 1971, you can understand how new our country is. For, this is one of the new news. It was announced, a cabin reshuffle in the UAE, last month only, that nine women ministers across a part of the 31 member strong group of cabinet. And we are proud to have few, maybe two of them are younger in the twenties, part of the cabinet. So our government support women, not by words. And we would like really to thank the government of Jordan, the support given to STEM. And especially the Princess Sumaya, who is keen to support STEM and women in STEM. And I really admire such, such personality like Princess Sumaya and how she is keen to support and continue to support such, you know, belief. And this conference is a good example, an excellent example to see the effort government of Jordan spent to make this true. Here's some statistics. 95, just, so 95 of literature, women and men, 95 percentage of literature, women and men of both gender, and 95.8 percentage of women in UAE. 77 percentage of women enrolled in higher education, 70 percentage of university graduates. You can see how big number of women graduated from university. 46 percentage of UAE university graduates in STEM. This is considered women. So women are 46% of the STEM graduates. In the, of course, UAE focused now in a nuclear workforce. So we have 10% of nuclear workforce in UAE are women. And 20% of total workforce in the nuclear industry are women. This is what currently is. So I think in the future, there will be growth in this percentage. And it is an industrial area in Baraka. So it's, it's away from the city. Now it's my, Miriam Althani Al-Falasi. I am boss chair of ITRP UAE section and a board member of Emirates Science Club. I graduated from UAE University in 1998 as electrical engineer. My specialization is control and power. And I got my executive master in business administration from Zayed University in 2007. My, I'm also AFQM assessor and equality auditor. This is my experience through my work. Mainly my job is project management, focus on project management in different area. Currently, I'm in asset department. One of the achievement during my school studies, I was the first in math in UAE and I was the second in Gulf states. It was, I received a honor recognition from, in mathematics, from Arab Bureau of Education. It was a big competition across Gulf countries in math. So I was, I was the first in UAE, which drove me to go to engineering, then to electrical. My motive in life is family. My father is an artist. After 40, after 23 years, he came back to be, to draw and bent again. He's the first artist in United Arab Emirates. He's now in seventies. My mom pay all attention for us to focus in education and she always say, "Your education is your weapon." My sister is a PhD graduate in solid states from University School of Mines in Denver. My sisters and brothers, all of them are educated in different field. My hobby is shooting. I participated in two competitions, one Asian, one international shooting competition in skeet. But I don't have much time to focus on that, but this is my hobby, which I'm proud of it. These are some articles that me in shooting, I'm not in engineering. How many of you are spending time in volunteering or involved in any social activities? Great number. And how many of you are specialized in STEM? STEM engineering, okay. Then I will talk, I'm talking to the right people. So volunteering and social, for ITRP, this is my journey in ITRP. In 2003, we formed the Women in Engineering in UAE section. I was asking why we are forming Women in Engineering? We don't have any difficulties against women in engineering. Why, why is that? So why, why to represent women in engineering? The answer is, we need to show our best examples in United Arab Emirates to the world. We have a good success stories in UAE and we need to share our best practice. So I thought, yes, why not to form the Women in Engineering with the support of the volunteers and Dr. Isa Bastaki? So we formed the UAE Women in Engineering in 2003. And we received the honor recognition after one year for being a high growth in membership. In 2007 and eight, I was nominated in 2007 to chair, to coordinate for Women in Engineering in Region Eight, which now Yumna is handling. Lucky we were, in 2007 and, yes, in 2007 and eight, we had the highest growth in membership in Europe, Africa and the East. And we received in both years, a honor recognition from the global Women in Engineering. In 2012 and 13, by voting, I became the first female to chair section in ITRP in the Middle East area. During the period of chairing Women in Engineering, successfully, we helped Jordan section, other GCC sections to for Women in Engineering. And I think Ms. Rana Ramadan was the chair during that time. And Dr. Mohammed Abdul Aziz, who I really appreciate his support to form the Women in Engineering and he supported women activities in Jordan. So I will go through, these are some pictures of honor recognition and activities we spent, we prepared, we organized in UAE. Also, this is one of the magazine, we newsletter, we published about Women in Engineering. These are, the ITRP president visited UAE during that time. And the Women in Engineering Global Chair came to UAE and we had some appreciation token from her. There is a story about, a quick story about this picture. I received the honor recognition during my time when I was section chair. And with me, behind me, the Dr. Isa Bastaki is the one who supported me to be volunteer with UAE section. He was with us. And the new section chair of UAE is behind me. So what we are doing as a volunteer, we support a new generation to take over. We are not staying in our position. We are serving the community and we need a new blood every time. So we are three generation in the picture of the UAE. And we are proud of our new chair, Dr. Isa Basaid, who is the fairly new and young section chair. And he's very active because he spent years with the ITRP as a volunteer student, then graduate and now section chair. Some other activities, I was involved in IQ, MISA is High IQ Association. I'm a member, I was coordinator for UAE with Rony Leban. And I was involved also with the equality group. This is by election. I was the first female secretary general. And I was invited by Mexico. Then I had the chance to speak to 1,400 attendances in Mexico about Dubai model inequality. These are some pictures of our activities. And with Emirates Science Club, it's supporting science in UAE for government. Also, these are some activities. And I participated in the election for federal council. And I didn't get it, but inshallah I will try again. And, and that's it. Thank you, Dr. Tarek.
Thank you very much. Well, last but not the least, we have, so have my sheikh. He's really going to share with you some of the outcomes that the ITRP has been able to deliver, not just in terms of activities, but actually substantive programs. And more importantly, he will also offer opportunities that people have, may have in taking advantage of what ITRP has to offer, not just within Jordan, but within Europe, Middle East and Africa.
Thank you very much, Tarek. Good evening, everyone. We are running a bit late, so I'll be very quick. But I'll give you some very specific case studies. We just went through four very powerful talks. Yes? Oh, perfect, thank you. Which one, sorry, which one do I have to press? Okay, perfect, sorry. You'll notice one thing. So ITRP itself, it's a very old organization. It's 133 years old. And we have had the likes of Thomas Edison and Alexander Graham Bell as presidents of ITRP. And I think ITRP is privileged to have women visionaries like these sort of leading our Women in Engineering programs. Because what it shows you over here is that we have the breadth of experience and also an idea about the geographic certainty of different parts of the world. So we have Bosanna over here, leading the global activities of ITRP. She carries a lot of experience with her. We have Yumna, she focuses on Region Eight, which is Europe, Middle East and Africa. Sonia putting in industry input into the programs. And we have Miriam with her experience of a specific country, which is UAE. So you can get an idea. And all of these females have committees of females behind them as well, who work very hard. And the whole reason I'm sort of repeating all of this is that ITRP is very serious in encouraging more females into STEM subjects, into sciences, into engineering as a career and to help them achieve a good career as well, give them the right skills. We have programs which range from inquiry based science education, for example, for teachers, in addition to what Bosanna already mentioned. We have hands-on community-based projects as well to give them skills around practical implementation of the theories they're learning and et cetera. And one of the programs that I'll be giving your case study of is called Engineering Projects and Community Service. So within ITRP, although I come from industry, within ITRP, I lead ITRP's pre-university education programs. And these are multimillion dollar programs, which are completely philanthropic, giving back to the profession, giving back to the field. And this program is probably one of my favorite ones. And I'll in a bit tell you why. This is not a female-specific program. This is for both males and females. But the statistics will show you how our programs are actually making a real impact out in the field. So with Engineering Projects and Community Services, what we are trying to do is we are trying to inspire the next generation of engineers. That's really the key bit for us. And we are doing it in two ways. So the way this project works, this works is, female or male student members of ITRP, they start a project. Now, university students, they do project as part of their university, right? To graduate, it could be their final year project as well. They start with that. And they choose a project which actually solves a problem in their community through technology. And we involve pre-university students, school students as part of it, and NGO. And the way it helps is with the university students, it helps them apply their theoretical knowledge practically. With the pre-university school students, it's, there's a stereotype when you're in school, oh, maths is hard, physics is hard. It sort of shows them how actually these subjects, this engineering is actually making a difference in the world. And then NCHU's provide the real world practical knowledge. And the cherry on the top is, ITRP provides funding for these projects. And these funds typically range from $5,000 to $10,000 per project. So since 2009, we have funded 90 projects in 14 countries. We have awarded around $500,000 across the world. And when we started collating all the statistics, we found one interesting thing. So according to the Society of Women Engineers, less than 20% of engineers globally are women. The females who were participating in our programs, the university students, out of everyone, all the students participating, 36% were females, higher than them. On the pre-university side, school side, 42%, almost half, were female school students who were doing projects which were related to STEM subjects. Now that's brilliant. Because what it shows us is that this program is actually providing them with some sort of knowledge and experience that they wouldn't get anywhere else. I'll give you two examples over here of our project leaders. One from Brazil, one from Tunisia. So Brenda from Brazil, she did a project in the Amazon forest. And the key bit for her learning was that she was able to actually learn about the real world problems which you don't learn from the theoretical subjects. Now that's the type of knowledge, if you take into the field, you get an edge above others. Wafa from Tunisia stated that along with the practical knowledge, she was able to build leadership and technical skills. she was able to build leadership and technical skills at the same time. She was able to lead a team. So with all of the vision that we have presented, we are trying to turn that into actual, practical skills which we actually can give out and inspire the next generation of females. One very specific example I want to give right now, I think she has left Nada, she's not in the room. So in this program, you may have noticed in the program, there's a specific section on Jordanian upcoming stars. And one of them is Nada Mana. She's an IEEE member. And if you read her profile, she did an EPICS project where she actually deployed photovoltaic cells in Palestinian refugee camps. Now, this is something inspiring for others as well who are seeing. And it's such a start, we have had global impact ranging from inspiring STEM in Texas to cellular services in the Amazon, and casual talk with the deaf in India. So huge range. And that's it from my side, talking about this one. The key bit I want to leave you with is, IEEE as an organization, we are there to inspire the next generation of female engineers. And we are here with the tools, with the resources, with the finances to help you achieve that. And we actually open and invite to all of you as well, come join us in this journey. And maybe together we'll create new stories. If not, then take the charge yourself and become role models. We'll be there with you to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sohaib. We really took our lead from this morning's session when I think Prince Al-Hassan was willing to somewhat extend the time and make it a little more elastic than the normal half an hour that was devoted. So I'll take the same privilege and maybe rather than call the thing to a halt in the next five minutes. We had originally planned a questionnaire to get some feedback from you, but bearing in mind that time is running out and a number of people want to get back to the hotels to prepare for the exotic celebrations later on in the evening. I'll basically throw the session open and invite colleagues to ask questions of our panel or make any comments they may have in terms of what they've heard so far.
Or you can come quickly, always those.
I can answer from here, but.
I know, but there are questions.
Do identify yourself and a short, sharp question, please.
It's Gordon Dalton from ICORZA, the International Consortium of Research Staff Associations. Thank you very much for inspiring a set of speeches from different expertise. As I said, I come from a research staff association and represent researchers. And researchers is a new career for both male and females. And you've given presentations so far for, it seems like, for students and people going through universities, as well as industry. But I'm not, maybe I've missed the researcher section. Because the researcher career is a new career, where researchers go post PhD into a career of research. In the United States, the career of a researcher is only at the postdoc phase. And after three years, usually you have to leave or you go into tenure track. In Europe, there's a possibility of a whole career of research, but it's really difficult, both for men. And in our experience for ICORZA, it's even more difficult for women to have a career in pure research. So I was wondering, Bosanna, what's your perception of the career for researchers, for women, in universities in the pure research field?
Thank you, my friend. A question, it's really bringing to focus a different cadre of individuals we may or may not have addressed, but perhaps.
Yeah, I would like to say that out of the 20,000 members, 17,000 come from technical societies. So it means that they are associated with particular area of research. And many of them are just researcher. As I mentioned, many of my former students are the position of researcher. And they don't teach, they have research position. And I think that sort of, for me, this is my perspective. I don't distinguish, it means it's not a difference in terms of issues that we address. Issues are the same. And those postdocs, they have own organizations, beautiful organizations in the United States, where they really, again and again, built on networks. But that network means that brings us together in terms of interest, research interest, but also in terms of our position, our situation at particular institutions. My own daughter is research. And in the position of research, she doesn't teach, she has a research position. And so those, I don't think that we sort of like distinguish very strongly that is particular group of people who have different issues or face different issues than other group. I'm not sure that this is what you address, what you wanted to ask.
Certainly, female, women researchers in Europe are very difficult to progress in person.
I see. Yeah, this is very nice, very nice topic, very good topic. In fact, I will follow up motivated, inspired by your question. I will follow up in our discussion whether there is, you know, think maybe I'm not aware of that particular group or issues in particular groups. But we have also at our university, only researchers position in research, in labs, and in science, and so on, and in engineering. We have those positions. I'm not aware, in the United States, I'm not aware of particular problems in that group, except it's very important mentoring and mentees in those groups. I know for sure that is extremely important.
Well, thank you, Madam. I think, can I give you a slightly different perspective? I come from Britain, and in Britain, and a number of European countries, even under the EU, there are programs, particularly in Britain, that if you have postdoctorals and they're on a contract or if the span covers more than five years, then it is mandatory that they're given a permanent position. So that gets rid of this uncertainty that postdocs tend to suffer, or have suffered when I was a younger man, of the uncertainty of not having a job after a contract is over. So there are conditions that are now being placed, both within the EU, European Research Council, and within the UK, that career prospects for postdocs are very important, and that they should not necessarily be left under lurch, must have done something of the order of about five years.
The reason, I will add only one second, one, the reason why I think that is the same, because in the United States now, at academic, at universities, is so-called post-tenure review, post-tenure election, and it doesn't happen that it's only, you know, for fantasy or whatever. It's very serious. If it's observation, even professor has tenure, can lose that tenure if it's not effective. So in this way, I'm saying that there are not dramatic differences from my perspective.
Any other comments? Yeah, sorry. Madam, please.
سَتَأَحَدَتْ بِاللُّغَةِ عَرَبِيَةً وَبِالْفَرَنْسِيَةً أظن بأن هناك من يستطيع أن يترجم دكتورة اسمى بن قادة متخصصة بالرياضيات وبالعلوم السياسية نائب سابق بالبرلمان الجزائر
ما يمكن أن ترجم؟ لأنهم لا عندهم.
No, no. Let her post a question, you can translate that and answer.
بالعربي بترجمة.
Okay. But not all of us have translators, so maybe you can translate that question. Please, madam.
Okay. إذا نائب سابق بالبرلمان الجزائر ورئيسة لجنة التربية التعليم العالي للبحث العلمي والشؤون الدنيا سؤالي منهجي يخص الإشكالية
She's specialized in math?
موضع
Okay. لأنهم لا يسمعون لأنهم ما على هذا لا لسه ترجم okay
You can still translate that.
You can still translate.
No problem, okay.
موضوع المنتمدة هو العلم من أجل السلام رأينا كل الإحصائيات وكل الجداول وكل المعلومات حول المرأة والعلم المرأة والهندسة المرأة والصناعة أين السلام؟ أين الجزء الآخر من موضوع المنتمدة؟ لأن موضوع المرأة والسلام مهم جدا جدا نحن نعرف بأن الذي كان يتخذ على الدوام قرار الحرب هو الرجل والذي يصنع آلة الحرب هو الرجل والمرأة والرجل مختلفان في تعاملهما مع فلسفة العلم إذا ربما كان ينبغي أن ندرس المرأة في العلم la femme dans la science أو موقف المرأة من النظريات العلمية التي انتجها رجال يقال مثلا بأن الخيال الخصب l'imagination fait-il chelou الخيال الخصب عند الرجل مختلف تماما عن الخيال الخصب عند المرأة إذا المرأة مثلا تعتمد على الحدس على الخبرة على العوامل ذاتية والرجل يعتمد في تعامل مع البحث العلمي على عوامل أخرى أيضا وطبعا يشتركان في منطقة تقاتع مشتركة إذا كان من المفروض حتى وفقا لقرارات الأمم المتحدة ونحن نتعامل مع UNESCO كمنظمة فرعية عن الأمم المتحدة وهناك قرار يقول بأن لا بد من خلق كتلة حرجة ينماسكريتك بالموسسات التنفيذية حتى تستطيع المرأة أن تتناول العلم وفقا لفلسفتها الخاصة بما يعتبر anougishismo فراءا للقرار السياسي والاقتصادي الذي تتخذه المرأة والرجل في المؤسسات المختلفة إذا سؤالي هو تصحيح منهجي لتجاه الكلمات على أساس أن المرأة تتعامل مع الصناعة والهندسة والعلم بفلسفة مختلفة إلى حد ما عن الفلسفة التي يتعامل بها الرجل مع العلم وهناك نظريات كثيرة جدا نتناولها في الدراسات النساء حول هذا الموضوع إذا نتمنى لو أن يأخذ هذا الموضوع بعين الاعتبار بحيث نصل إلى النتيجة ما هو الدور الذي يمكن أن تلعبه المرأة المهندسة والمرأة المتخصصة في مجال الصناعة في تحقيق السلام في العالم شكرا
Well, thank you very much, madam. That was a very challenging, very thought-provoking question. I will ask some of our people to answer that. But before we do, I entirely agree with what you're saying. It's a question of war and where the thinking comes from, that. Now, bear in mind, the UNESCO's riding tenet is to create peace in the minds of men and women. You saw this morning a presentation, a welcome note that was presented by the Secretary General of UNESCO, that's a lady, Reena. Her follow-up, she's finishing her term just now, is going to be another lady, okay? In Britain, significant positions of power are now occupied by ladies. We have a female Prime Minister. We have very significant positions that are being given to ladies. For example, the Royal Society of Edinburgh, the president of that, which is one of the ancient national academies, is run by a woman. I can go on, but that's not really the point. The point you're really making is, how can we bring about a change? And right at the beginning, I don't know if you were here, I made the statement that science is for peace, engineering is for change. And when we work together, we can bring about what we want. But I won't hog this thing, I'm going to turn around and ask our panel, who would like to respond to that question? Miriam.
يعني في اعتقادي أن المؤتمر هذا أخر دليل أن المرأة والرجل يقفان من أجل السلام ولا فرق بين المرأة ورجل لا توجد أي عائلة مكونة من رجل لوحده أو مرأة لوحدها فاعتقد نحن جميعا في تجاه واحد له من أجل السلام وبالتعاون نصل إلى تحقيق هدفنا شكرا
Yes, madam, we're just going to take two more questions. I've been getting signals that you're going to close that.
Thank you for your presentation. My name is Dr. Hannah Al-Ghazawi. I'm from Jordan Standard and Metrology Organization. It's a little bit technical question about standards issued by IEEE. Are they a private standard? Are they made public for anyone to purchase, or is it for free? This is the first question. The other thing I want to comment that, I did not know that IEEE has a branch in Jordan. And we are keen for your cooperation because in our thesis, we need experts to participate in issuing and adoption of standards, whether it's published by IEEE or by ISO, IAC, SIN, Sinelec, and so on. So it's our request for you as a branch from IEEE to participate in thesis. Thank you.
Okay, you go ahead.
You got any memberships?
Both of you, go ahead, Sonia.
Okay, but, well, we do have a branch in Jordan, IEEE Jordan section. And I lead the WIE, the Women in Engineering Affinity Group, which is a part of the section. We do exist in Jordan, and we would love to collaborate with you. We can share our contacts, and we have our president, Dr. Ghaif Abanda. So we do exist, and strongly. So we will definitely share our contacts, and we will collaborate.
What was the first question?
You asked about the memberships, right? Yeah, it's about.
Right, so my understanding of your question was you're asking if IEEE standards are private, if they are free of cost, or if they are available to the general public, right? Right. So there are a number of ways IEEE standards work. To a member of the general public, there is an option to buy. So as Tarek was mentioning earlier in his speech, IEEE has a database called Explorer, which has four million documents available. So anybody could go on there, search the standard they're looking for, pay, and they will get it. That's one way. Another model is that IEEE is closely collaborating with a lot of universities, including universities in Jordan, where the university buy a package and make it open to, make all standards open within the university's system to all students and all faculty members. And they can download it for free, and there's a regular charge for that. IEEE is also working on an open standards platform at the moment as well. And within that, we are looking at seeing some of the core standards, which are required, how we can share that. In terms of collaboration with other standard organizations, there is precedence. IEEE has collaborated with other standards organizations throughout the world. I think the starting point, as Sonia pointed out already, is starting with the Jordan section. And from there, the collaboration can start, and the IEEE Standards Association can get involved. And then it can move forward. You're welcome.
I have a question. I'm the president of the European Union of Science Journalists, I'm Jens Deget. And my wife is actually a doctor engineer. And the magazine I write for is also dominated by women, the editors, women, the co-editors is female. They have asked me to write a story about gender equality, especially in the Arab world. So therefore, I'm really, really interested in listening to what. So therefore, I'm, I'm really, really interested in, in listening to what, what do you think is the major obstacle for women in the Arab world in engineering and, and science? And second, do you think or do you find that the fact that you are present and talk about this issue at this conference, do you think it will have any impact? Or what do you think will be needed in order to make a difference?
Thank you very much.
Do you want to go for it? Okay. Thank you for your question. Well, I would confirm that it is the culture in the Arab region. Because this is, starting from the culture, it generates the, the pay gap. And it doesn't start even with just the, started working, even from universities or younger ages at school, females are encouraged to pursue a career in academia or something non-scientific. So young, younger girls at schools, they are discouraged to pursue a career in STEM fields. And there, there are many things need to be done. Starting from the government, as I mentioned, they need new legislations that will support females when they started working. The wage transparency is, is very important. We have also, we need lots of firm legislations that come to maternity leaves and these, these, this support for women. I do believe that programs, that, that coaching and mentorship, this is what we need, this is what worked for, for many younger, for the younger females that just started their, their jobs. And this is where we need the support, yeah.
I, I wanted to add, I learn about, I agree fully, it's about culture. I learn about those incredible differences, about role of woman in the family through my students. My last student is a mother of nine children and she comes from Arabic country and she was like one week before defense and she comes to me, to my office and I put a lot of effort to bring her to the level to finish thesis and she comes and she cries and she says, I'm leaving. And because my daughter was left by husband, whatever, the situation, I say, no, think you are just one week, you've done everything for your children, now they are adults and you need to finish. So for me, from my perspective, my husband is also engineer and mathematician, from that kind of things that I'm growing, I grew up, that kind of thing. But she is telling me, no, you don't know my culture. In my culture, family comes first, I don't care about that degree. I say, but there is something like responsibility, you know, so I was, you cannot imagine what kind of the first time in my life, what kind of issue I went through. Of course, she came back, I thought that she left and she finished, but she came back, she finished, she was on first page of journals and so on, she gave me credit for that degree. But I realize how incredible differences are in cultures. So something should be done together with men, just share equally responsibility and don't make wife responsible for all family and children and grandchildren and all kinds of things. So I believe, but this is my personal experience and personal perspective.
But thank, thank you, Basana.
I'd also like to answer the question. I would like to give, it's right, it's the culture, I'd like to give what in the culture is, in my opinion, the problem. The traditional roles of men and women. So our parents, including mine, they encourage us to have a part-time job or a job that can be done from home, that does not take all the day, like eight to five or even more if you're a researcher or something else. They encourage us to become teachers or to light jobs in order to have time to take care of our families and our children and all of that. And it's also there, today I just had a discussion actually with someone who said the woman, it's optional if she wants to work or not. So the husband has to provide, it's the, it's the duty of the husband to have a house and to get her whatever she wants. So if she is able to rest and not work, why would she even want to work? So this is also another problem from, this is from the society side. And from the employer's side, they think of the woman as the number of maternity leaves she will take or the job she cannot achieve. So he will say, okay, every year maybe she has a child and she will need some rest and she will have the maternity leave. So this also discourages employers from actually employing women, especially in technology where work is actually demanding. In my case, I work with, in the field, in the field of telecommunications and my employer was reluctant also to hire me because everybody who works on the field is a guy because we have sometimes to climb on towers and on rooftops. And I faced problems, oh, you want to climb, you want to do that, we can do it for you. So this, this is also a mentality, the employer says maybe she will not be able to physically do the field work also. And what can be done is to give a paternity leave, I think, this is from both the human side and the work side. So it's not only the woman who should take the maternity leave, they should be equally taken by the man and the woman.
And in the United States, that should be case.
Yeah, yeah, in some countries it is and some countries it is shared, but in many countries, in Lebanon, for instance, it's two days for the man and three months, two or three months for the woman. And from society wise, I think we need a paradigm shift. So we need to shift the, the paradigm saying that women should take care of family and not work and it's the duty of the man to, to provide everything his family needs. So responsibilities should be shared between the man and woman.
I just want to add one last thing, it's just, I feel that there's a bit of hypocrisy in these things. Because the same culture that pays you less than a man, it is the same culture that also asks you to participate equally, like in the financial life. I mean, I know that I will be responsible for the financial also aspects, I mean, at least equally as the man. But the same culture pays us less, it, it doesn't, just doesn't make sense.
But thank you very much. I mean, we've had rather interesting few minutes of discussion. I, I want to make one observation. Things are changing and things are changing dramatically in the Middle East. I note that there are more girls taking up engineering in the UAE and some of the Middle Eastern universities than they are taking engineering in, in, in Britain. And some of us are looking towards the ways as to how these universities have been able to attract so many more girls from doing STEM subjects through to studying engineering. And that's something that will obviously lead to an enlightened way of looking at women and their careers. Ladies and gentlemen, it's getting quite late in the evening. I'm very grateful that you stayed on. I'd like you to join me in thanking our panel for the excellent presentations they've made and can also remind you that we have spare copies of this very informative magazine that our Women in Engineering Program of the IEEE produces. Feel free to come along and help yourself to a copy. So thank you once again and please, thanks, thanks to the panel.